I don't know if I'll be keeping up with the schedule later. You know, it's on vacation again next week. I mean, you know, when do you work? Oh, Hillary in the tree, huh? Yeah, I tell you. There's no one that works more than that man. Uh, we will get started now. Thank you all for being here. Uh, the first thing is the city council briefing and it's a tax relief for the elderly and disabled task force. And I want to thank Barbara Henley who, on behalf of the council, I thank you for working with this wonderful group of people. Would you like to make the introduction of who's speaking?
I'll be glad to. As soon as I can. Just a couple of raises.
All right.
Um, I don't know how I got the honor of being a liaison to something dealing with tax here, but I guess I drew the short straw somewhere along the way. But if you all remember last February, we had a letter from the city manager that asked us if we wanted to continue the escalator for this program. Since last year was the first year of a few years that the assessments had gone up. And to be perfectly honest, it didn't really strike a chord with me at that time, but the response of the council was, well, we don't want to make a change in this program without a lot more information. And so council said, well, we would just continue last year as it had been, but we would look into this program before this tax. So that's what we were assigned to do. And Mike Ashkenaz is going to present for the committee the findings. And I will just tell you that this program is, I think we all agreed, a very important program, which has an awful lot of different ways it can be administered. And so we've got a lot of data here for you. And Mike is going to do the report, which kind of highlights some of the most substantial features. And then, of course, it's ultimately going to be up to the council to decide whether to make any adjustments or not. So, Mike?
Mike, we're glad to have you. We thank you and the whole team for spending the time to come back with something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure being here. We worked very hard on this. You appointed us in the October timeframe, and we've met virtually every Monday since then to come up with the information that you are getting ready to see. This is an important program and important to the city and important to the seniors and everyone else that has anything to do with the program, as well as the disabled. I'm Mike Ashkenaz. We have here, if you'll stand up, please, so you know who the task force members were: Lee McDaniel, John Eason, Rosemary could not be with us, Ira could not be, and of course, Mrs. Henley. We were tremendously supported by Phil Kellum and Eric Schmody from the Commissioner's Revenue's Office, Dana Harmeyer, City Attorney's Office, the Director of Budget and Management Services, Catherine White soul, was a huge help to us, as well as Crystal Featherston and Kevin Chatalier. So we've got tremendous support when we're trying to put this together. To give you an idea of how much support we have, Renee, would you pick up the papers? That's how much we ended up with, if you could. So I understand you, city council, if you, when you have to look at items and you have to do that kind of informational research, you've got a job I would not want to have. I can promise you that. That's our program goal. There were two words that kept coming up every time we had a meeting. Those two words were fairness and sustainability. And that goes, if we can accomplish that program goal, we will accomplish both of those things: fairness and sustainability. In 19, there were two prior reviews of the program prior to this year. 1998, the review, and you can look at the numbers. You've got 100% tax relief if you made up to $13,000. Not a lot of money, but again, 1998. And net assets, you could have up to $70,000. There were 18, a little over 1,800 participants, and the cost of the program was $1.6 million. Okay? And the staff recommended a couple of increases. 2003, it was reviewed again. In fact, one of your council people, John Boss, was on that task force. And the limits went up. You could make up to 26,000, 100% tax relief, and you could have assets of 52,000. Limited, and there was a tax deferral program at that time, and they eliminated the 8% interest charge, where if you deferred your taxes, you would pay interest for every year that you deferred the taxes at 8%, and that was eliminated. They wanted to implement the changes over time and if things matter. And again, you can see the number of participants, 2,852, and the cost in those five years went from the 1.6 million up to the 2.9 million. So that gives you a little history of the program. Remember now, no review, no one has looked at this program since 2003. So for 12 years, this program has been on autopilot. And all of a sudden, it was like, you know, I think we got a program that maybe is growing way beyond where we ever intended to be. So our task force was established by city council to take a look at the program and see what would make sense going forward. Again, fairness and sustainability, really two very, very important factors with respect to the program. Right now, we have three different ways a person can get tax relief. Tax exemption, you can get 100%, and then it goes down in 20% increments, 80, 40, 60, 20. Tax freeze, where whatever you're paying now, you can elect to have it frozen at that rate, that amount, no matter what the rate goes up to, and no matter how much your assessment goes up. So whatever you're paying taxes now, you can elect to say, I want to pay this amount for as long as I own my house. And lastly, tax deferral, where you defer your tax bill up to 100%, and you don't pay that amount until ownership of the resident changes, at which times the complete tax bill is due. Currently, there is no interest charge on that program. All three programs use a net worth. You can't have more than $300,000 net worth excluding the house and 10 acres of land. So your assets can be as much as $350,000 excluding the house, and you're still eligible to be in the program. And that is what we have currently in our program. Okay. How do we compare to other cities? Is that important? I think it's important. We are by far, not even close, the most generous city in the whole Hampton Roads area. If you wanted to receive currently 100% tax exemption, you can make as much as $48,000 a year, and you will pay no taxes, and you will never have to pay those taxes back. 100% exemption. As you can see, Chesapeake, and of all the cities, I would think Chesapeake was probably as comparable to us as any city, more so than any of these other cities, I would think. Okay? 22,000, Fort Smith, 21. These are a little misleading. Suffixes 44, 269, but they limit it to the house value of 201, 201,700. What is that? That's the average price of a residential home in the city. So let's say you had a $400,000 house. Your maximum tax exemption would be based on 201, and you would pay the full load between 201 and the 400,000. We don't do that. We don't limit. And also, these houses blow 20,611, they also limit it to, again, the single-family residential average home. And they limit their program cost to $5 million. When it hits $5 million, it's over. Anybody else wants to apply, tough. We don't do that. I would hate to have a person really needing, really needing the program, coming up at the end of the program and being told, oh, sorry, you're too late. Whereas other people that need it maybe a lot less are in the program. So we don't, we do not have a limitation. In 2003, we could have gone way back earlier, but we didn't. We thought, well, let's go back nine years. That'll give us a really good indication. These are total participants enrolled per year. As you can see, 4,500 in 2006. And as you know, our population is growing older and older. More and more people are turning 65 every year, and it's going to get even more so than it was in the past. And you can see how it's gone up, and currently, there's over 8,000 people in our program. The difference between this and this are the number of veterans that are 100% disabled that the state has said, you guys have to give them 100% tax relief, and we're not contributing. So the difference between this, 7185, and the 8130 is approximately 1,000 people that are veterans who are 100% disabled. And they just passed a new law that says if you're a widow or a widower who has lost a service member on active duty who has died, you will get tax relief, 100% for the rest of your life, no matter what house you live in. So if you live in a $200,000 house now and end up with a 400, makes no difference, you get 100% tax relief. Okay? Interesting. We don't know how many people, since we're such a military community, are all of a sudden going to become eligible for that relief. And we could be talking about people 20, 30 years old that will be in the program. Now, if they marry, they're out of the program. If they're smart, they don't marry. You stay in the program.
I might be independent of the program.
Okay. How much does the program cost? 2006, because again, we started with the numbers in 2006. The program was 6,200,000. The difference, and here, we have no choice. So our current program, which we do have a choice, is 12,800,000. So we're talking about a 100%, over 100% increase in the cost of this program in the last nine years. If we do nothing now, where are we going to be nine years from now? If it doubles again, you're going to have a $25 million program. Again, we go back to the words: fairness and sustainability. I'm going to handle questions at the end, because I think that a lot of things will come out that'll answer your questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
By the way, the school revenue formula, they don't have to pay any of this. It's excluded from the formula. So the 100% of the cost of the tax relief program is borne by the general fund, city council's portion of the money. Nothing to the school board. Interestingly, when the program was looked at the last couple of times, the amount of what benefits you got was tied to the real estate tax assessment. So as the tax assessment went up, the threshold went up, and the amount that then you could make in order to qualify the program went up considerably. As you can see, it didn't go up a whole lot in the first few years. Then about 2005, if you remember, real estate assessments skyrocketed. 11 and 1/2%, and then these three years really went up. And that's why our numbers are where they are today, to qualify to be in the program. Then when it went down these five years, nothing was set up in the program to take into account of when it goes down. So in 2005, you got 100% deduction if you made 22,800. Now's when it starts to skyrocket, 27,800. And this is where you get 100%. That means you pay zero taxes, 100% exemption. And watch this, from 34,000, 2007 to 2008, we went from 34,000 to an income of 46,000, and then 47,000. And it stayed 47,000, because nothing was set up that when the assessments went down, this would go down. So it stayed the same for five years. And that's really the crux of what we're talking about today. Had that adjusted, it would be considerably different, which you're going to see in just a second. Okay? So if it didn't adjust downward this year, and it is, 48,000. And once you look at that, then you see the 80%, exactly the same, 60, 40, 20. And the freeze, which in 2005, and the freeze was 45,000, now you can make as much as $68,000 and get the freeze. Again, it never went down. As you notice, the same, 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 same. Deferral, same thing. It went from 52 to the 68,293. This is what we recommend, strongly recommend, okay? Establishing the goal, which is that, which is on your second page. And again, two things: fairness and sustainability. Completely eliminate deferral program. Right now, 13 people, 13 are in the deferral program. Deferral means defer their taxes until they either die or pay off their, pay the house and move. Once they move or die, then they have to pay it. It's, what you're giving them is an interest-free loan for as long as they live in that property. I don't know that the city is in that position to give anybody an interest-free loan, guys. And even worse, the state code limits that amount that could be collected if they have financial problems to 10% of the amount owed in priority position, which means 90% of what's owed then falls in with all the other creditors. You don't necessarily recoup the money that they owe. 10%, you're in number one position. After that, 90%, you're just one of the creditors. That's the state code. Where's Dana? Dana will vouch for that, right Dana?
The priority piece, yes, but to the extent that we have had limited or no experience of anyone actually reaching the 10%, should also be stated.
Yes.
Is it recorded? I'm assuming it's recorded.
Oh, yeah. So by operation of law, the deferrals get put on the land book so that it would come up if anyone was fully entitled in anticipation of sale.
Okay, it's recorded as a lien against the property. Correct. Okay? And to make sure this doesn't happen again, that nothing is done with this program for a long, long time, we strongly recommend that a citizen task force every three years be appointed to look at this. If everything's fine, great. If not, tweak it, change it, whatever's necessary at that time. Everybody thinks they can look into the future, and, oh, this is going to happen, that's going to happen. Life doesn't work that way. So what we recommend is have a look at it, and let's make sure that we're on the right track. Okay. Currently, this is what the exemptions are. At 100%, you can make up to 48,000. 80%, you can make up to 52,000, et cetera. What we're recommending is, instead of going up to 48,000 for your 100% exemption, reduce it to 38,668, because that's what it would have been had it gone up, the real estate assessments, and gone down. To me, that is, to us, that was the fair way of doing it. We didn't snatch a figure out of the year, which we could have easily done, and said, let's make it 30,000. Let's make it 40,000. We took a real good look at where it would be, had somebody had the foresight to say, gee, real estate assessments may one day go down. Now, who would have ever dreamed in this room that ever would have happened? Probably none of us, not in 2006, '07, or '08. Oh, of course, real estate's going up. So there was no adjustment made. Had the adjustment been made, that's where we would have been. Okay? Now, the number of people that are currently getting that 100% is 5,700 people. That will go down to 4,000. And you can see the numbers in each of the categories. So what we're saying is, you can't make everybody happy. So you go back to the fairness and sustainability portion of it. And what's going to happen is, those persons that will drop out of the exemption will be completely eligible, 100% for the freeze program. We've made it high enough, income-wise, that every person that is currently getting tax assistance, every one of them, will still be getting some kind of tax help. Everyone, 100%. They may not be getting an exemption, but they certainly can go into the tax freeze program. Because with that income limit, that is the maximum current income limit. So we have eliminated nobody. There's a couple of things we would like you to consider. We're not saying do it, we're not recommending it, but it came up in our conversations, and we thought that you should know about it, because it might give you some leeway if you're interested in doing it. There are certain types of income, like IRA. People have IRAs, and they take withdrawals from those IRAs. Right now, it's considered an asset, and if you take money out of it, it's considered income to you. You may or may not want to leave it that way. If you're over 70 and 1/2, you have to take something out of your IRA. You have to take at least 4%. It's called a required minimum distribution, and that counts as your income. Whether you like it or not, you have to take it. And secondly, if the city wishes to retain the deferral program, which we're recommending that you guys not do, you're talking about, right now, with zero interest rate, consider at least putting an interest rate on it. Not necessarily, certainly, the 8%, but some interest, so that you're not giving anybody a tax-free loan. There are other ways a person can go without going deferral. It's called a reverse mortgage. And it works exactly the same, and the city isn't the one holding the bag. It's a mortgage company or a insurance company. And people will be able to get enough money to pay their taxes without the city having to go on the hook for the possibility, is 20 years, without receiving income from real estate taxes. Right now, it's anticipated that you, the city of Virginia Beach, will be looking at a $13 million shortfall in your budget. 13 million. I'll go just quickly to this. If you accept our recommendations and agree and say, hey, this makes sense, we will save the city $3.3 million. That's how much it would reduce this tax assistance program. Since 2006, participation has grown 79%, but the cost of the program has grown 144%. That's a pretty good increase in a nine-year period. The total cost of tax relief this year is, if you include the veterans, is 15.2 billion. That equates to 3 cents of the real estate assessment, which means if you didn't have the program, and I promise you, that never came up. A lot of people say, oh, you're going to do away with the program. That never came up in this discussion. We were never going to do away with the program. However, the program is costing an equivalent of 3 cents of the real estate taxes. If there were no program, instead of 93, it could be 90, and you generate the same amount of income. How sustainable do we want this program to be? I don't want us to ever have a situation where we say we can't afford this program. This is a way we can continue to afford, to help our seniors. And again, and this is so important, and this is something we mulled over and tried to make happen, so difficult to do sometimes, to make sure everybody in the program can be in the program and get some kind of real estate relief. Maybe not necessarily what they currently have, but some kind of relief. Nobody can say, oh, you kicked us out of the program. Everybody will be in the program. And now, hit me with questions.
Michael, we certainly do thank you, Barbara.
Yeah. Dana, a couple of comments, because I know council is going to discuss this, and it's entirely up to you. I would just to call your attention to the fact that the committee looked at all kinds of different what-ifs. What if you did this? What if you did that? And we could have gone on forever doing that. But recognizing that it's really up to the council what you're going to do, what we essentially done is given you all the information and said that you kind of come up with what you think is right. But I will, and all of that's in this report, as well as all of the survey results from the virtual town hall survey, plus the previous two analyses, the 1998 and the 2003. And I think it's really significant that they seem to come up with these two ideas of fairness and sustainability, and were much more cautious in what they did with the program. But one of the interesting things that I thought, the 2003 recommendation was the first that we saw the automatic escalator put in. And that was put in to be whatever the social security increase was for each year, was an automatic escalator. But then, in 2005, the automatic escalator was changed to be the average tax assessment increase. And that's what caused the great change in the program during, you know, the rise and then the, of course, the fall. It didn't come down, it stayed up, it didn't correct. But in looking at all different possible accounts, there are some alternatives that you find in the appendix, a lot, with a lot of other information on pages 18, 19, and 20. For example, what if we just adjusted each threshold by $5,000? Or what if we reset the income threshold for 100% relief, requiring an income of less than $30,000, using figures like median household income and that kind of thing? What if, but the one that's, I think, is really interesting is number four. What if that adjustment had stayed, the social security adjustment each year? Where would we be now, instead of where we are? We would be a lot lower, even than what is recommended here. So then there's this question of, do we keep an automatic adjustment or not? And if we do, do we keep an automatic adjustment as the assessment average? Or maybe we go back to this automatic adjustment of the social security average? So you've got a lot of ways you can go with this thing, a lot of different ideas, but I think when you, and I noticed that some of, you know, in answering the questions, a number of the folks said, well, if it's not broken, don't fix it. But I think the program did break. It broke because the escalator brought things up, but didn't adjust when assessments went down. And so that's how we got to that high amount, which allowed many people to come into the program with much higher incomes than they otherwise would have, but kept it there. And when assessments went down for all those years, it didn't adjust. And so this recommendation is just showing you what if it did go back and adjust. And I would certainly recommend that if we do a program that keeps the automatic escalator at the average of the assessment increases, that we also say, if assessments go down, then that goes down too. But that's what the policy did not do. It did not provide for, you know, what happened during the recession when things went down. And so what we have really just supplied for you is a lot of information, a lot of questions, but I have to tell you that I did not understand, did not realize until, you know, this was just some of the many questions that we asked with this. And I have to tell you, this all came from these folks here and others that asked questions and that we got from the town hall. And the staff was so good about finding the answers to these things or this data. But I think it's very important to know that this program does not cost the schools anything. The school formula is determined as based on if these taxes were paid. And so all of the cost of the program comes from the city side, not the schools. And Catherine can correct me, but I think if we, if we did take it from the schools, you know, take it from the whole thing, it would be $72 less per pupil that the schools would get. And so, you know, when you look at all of the ramifications of this program, you look at what the other localities do, and it's interesting that some of our at what the other localities do, and it's interesting that some of our neighbors in Hampton Roads just don't even have an exemption program. It's a lot of information, and you can read this and you can wonder what's the right thing to do, but that's your job now. You've got the data.
Well, as I said to you earlier, we thank you and the entire committee. Thank you for your hard work. It's good information. Any more questions or comments, John?
I have two. If we go to slide eight. Is there anyone that was in the data point for 2012, $7,398, that is now not in the number of 2013, $6,903? Because you can see how we, it looks like, you would think that we lost participants, because the blue line says total participants, but those programs didn't exist until 2013. So I'm trying to figure out what the overlap is between the people that qualify for the, it wasn't a law, it was a constitutional amendment, for the public voted to grant those exemptions.
Yes.
So that's important to note. The General Assembly didn't do something to us. So is there overlap between those two groups?
In these numbers, yes. If you were 100 percent disabled veteran, and you met the income qualifications, you were in these numbers, and there's no way to separate you. The data doesn't exist. Starting in this year, we were able to separate the data points.
So I would just recommend for that chart, since we don't have that and there is overlap, that one, there probably ought to be some break in that blue bar, so, and there ought to be some note that there is overlap, but you can't discern it, because it looks as if, one, the program went down, and secondly, it looks like the total participants. So I think that would be an important part to know, especially since the report talks about, and I guess that would be true relative to the chart on page nine as well, when it gives a dollar, so we really have overlap. And if I, and my observation, Mr. Mayor, would be is I don't know that we're going to be able to decipher all of this in time to give guidance for the upcoming budget, because I think there's a lot that's not here. Because when someone says fairness, I never know what fairness is. That, you know, it's always nice of a definition of what we're trying to achieve. And if the policy objective of all this in the beginning was allow people to remain in their homes. But you can read in through here, at some point, we're saying, the difference is, at some point, the value of your home and the income says, hey, you might not be able to stay in your home. We need to kinda understand where that breakpoint is. Is it, is it like, even with interest rate, at some rate, you don't get a tax deductibility for interest on your home, because the home's, your mortgage interest is too high? So do we go back and look? So I think we ought to be looking at some of the other thought processes. The objective is to stay in your home, and what's fairness? Is that 125 percent of the median family home, and that's the part you exempt, and you pay the rest? Because it shouldn't really be about affordability. Shoot, we give away more money in a year than this thing cost us. We get $18 million to the Cavalier, this is only a $17 million program. So I don't think that should be the basis for saying it's not sustainable, because what we're really saying is that it's not sustainable for people to stay in their home. So I think what we gotta understand better is what's the fairness application for, as we define it as a body, staying, what does stay in your home mean? And at what point is that you might have the choice of having to pick a freeze, or you have to decide you can't stay in your home, because your people who have two kids working, paying daycare and everything else, they're still paying their property taxes. I think that's the essence of what I understand the discussion to be, right Barbara? I think that's true?
Well, that's one of the issues. And I think it's really telling if you read these prior reports, and they're not long. One of them has a lot of appendices. But the report from the 2003 committee, and also the report which staff wrote in 1998, and they were looking at those same things, remembering that, yes, we want to help the folks who are elderly with the situations that they have, remembering though, that somebody else has to pay additional tax to make up that difference, and that's where you get to be the fairness. You know, what, are there limits, or what are those limits? And that's what we're faced with, you know, with trying to decide.
Yeah, and I think when you look at that, we need to make sure that we don't use the rising cost of the constitutional amendment cost of the program in the equation of saying what we can't afford.
Well, that's why we put exactly what this program costs, separating it from the other. So, because if you look at the total cost of the program, it has those veterans in there, and you want to look at the part that is just the elderly and disabled, which we have the total control over.
Right.
Because we have no control over that other part, but we have total control over the elderly and disabled component.
But that does get into the discussion, I want to just make my last point, and I will, because I will discuss this a lot more. But on page nine of the report itself, it talks about the cost of this program in addition to other programs, which we don't talk about all tax expenditures. This is just one tax expenditure that we have. We have many others that we haven't looked at. So it shouldn't just be the seniors. And if we're not talking about reducing the real estate tax by the amount that we save, the other homeowners have received no benefit, they're just getting more spending, because that's the implication of closing the shortfall. So I think, in my view, there's a larger question, which is the five-year forecast talked about, was the overall sustainability of the city's spending plan even with this. So maybe we need a task force looking at the sustainability of the city's spending curve line and what our plan is. I know I've talked about that often, and it's not sustainable, and I think we all know it's not. And so, and I think, so I would be, I think there's a need for the change in the program. I'm not sure this is sufficient, to tell you the truth. I'm not saying when to do it, but I just think it needs a lot more discussion with the public about not just of what we have on our front of us, and maybe the public is comfortable with the program as we have it, and understanding how, I'm not saying they're not, but we haven't had that dialogue, but I do think the house value is something we ought to, might want to look at. I mean, I think there's some merit to that. I'm not saying that this is good data, I don't think we can make a decision on it. I think they've done a superb job. I served on one of these ones before. Barbara, I know how difficult it is to come to a conclusion, but I do know over that same period that they showed, over that period, we had a 52.2 percent net gain in appreciation of property. You had a 72.9 percent run-up, and then you had a 20.7 percent decline, so a net gain of 52.2 percent. And during that timeframe, we increased fees in lieu of taxes. And I know you've heard about this too, Barbara, the trash fee, stormwater management fee, these are all fees which there is no exemption from, which have run up on property owners. And the one last point I'd like to make is, when you're looking at income, we need to make sure and we understand how much proportion of the elderly's income goes to medical expenses, and how much the rise in that expense is around 8 percent per year. So when you're looking at numbers, you also have to take into consideration what is the expense rise of those individuals. I think it's a very calm, intricate issue to look at, when you're saying, I'm being fair. Fair is in the eye of the beholder, but I think we need a much more delineated definition of what we're being fair on before we make a change. That's my observation.
Rosemary?
Sure.
So you're talking about house values, because Suffolk and Norfolk put a limit on the house values. Are you saying that we should have looked at that as well?
I, I, I'm just saying that we, as a council, I think the board did a great
Did we get someone from the committee to comment on that? And we have, I think, would you mind? We have that data generated, so you can look at those charts, we just didn't put it in this recommendation.
I think it's a good one to look at.
That's all. Thanks so much for your thoughts.
Mike said he would speak about that.
We did look at it, and we certainly considered it, but we found out that, we did a quick look at the
Mike, Mike, go to the microphone. Mike, go to the microphone.
We looked at it, and we said, there are a lot of upper-priced houses in Virginia Beach that are getting tax relief. And we said, gee, is that fair? And when we looked at it, we found that there were 440 houses furnished by the Commissioner of Revenue, that are valued at over $350,000 in Virginia Beach that are in the program. And we said, boy, that doesn't sound fair. Then we looked at how many of those houses did the people live in for a long period of time, and we found out that 50 percent of those houses over $350,000, 50 percent of people had lived in there longer than 24 years. So I guarantee you, they bought them here, and the value is now here.
So when John talks about being taxed out of their homes, these people have been there a really, really long time.
Exactly.
That was a major part of looking at that, being taxed out
I remember when we was on that roof, my point is, as you're looking forward
So I think they, maybe they've answered your question?
No.
No.
I think they told us what the data point is. I don't think they're telling us, given where we are today and where we're looking forward, this is a discussion, not an answer, is that still a position that we can still sustain? And then ask people who are raising families, that we need to raise your taxes? These are the choices, and we look at all these things. And they got equally financially stressful situation. Where is that totality look? And I think it was different when the median family income has lost $7,000 of purchasing power since 2005. They're just as stressed as the seniors are, and we don't have tax relief, and they can't stay in their homes sometimes either. I'm just thinking, I'm not saying how much we should change it, I just think we need to re-baseline our education of the, what the fairness piece of that is.
They may have a lot of the data that you need to be
Oh, I think we have, I just mean they have the discussion.
I think we got it all right here, we just gotta make some decisions.
Yeah, and again
Any other questions or comments?
We should be a city for a lifetime.
There you go.
And that's the whole idea of trying to help the elderly people. Understand completely that the schoolteachers are struggling just as much as the elderly, there's no argument there at all. However, they have the opportunity to increase their income, to change their jobs, to do a lot of things to improve their financial situation. Unfortunately, the vast majority of the seniors don't have those options.
I would suggest the data of the economy does not suggest that that summation you made is correct.
All right, well, Mike, thank you, and to the whole team, we appreciate all y'all's hard work, and we will be discussing it a lot in the next 60 days.
Changing credit and increasing your income, that's not
Okay, Mr. Thorpe.
Thank you, Mayor. The next briefing is Dr. Heidi Kulberg, our Public Health Director, is here to tell you some good news about a grant that she has been able to obtain for us.
This is very exciting stuff.
Yeah.
About the baby.
Way to go on this.
I had the opportunity with Dr. Kulberg and Cindy last week, and this is a wonderful opportunity. It's definitely an add-a-girl and add-a-team.
We thank you, we're looking forward to it. It's all yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members. I'm thrilled to be here today to discuss an opportunity that we, as the city of Virginia Beach, is being given. Mr. Frank Batten Jr. and the Landmark Foundation has offered to give us $900,000, so $300,000 a year over the course of three years, to implement a baby care maternal-child health program. So what I'd like to do today, very briefly, is tell you some about our current reality, discuss baby care, show you some outcomes that a sister city has had with this, show you our proposed budget, and ask for your consideration for the ordinance that'll be on your docket next week. So, okay. May I have your, thank you. So this just shows a little current reality. I know my challenge is gonna be to not go into all the detail, because I love these numbers, and I know you guys have a tight schedule. So, you know, I'll just highlight a couple of quick things. Infant mortality, you know, we're between that 5.5 and 7.0, that's deaths per thousand live births per year. I'll let you know that the CDC, through Healthy People 2020, says if you're at 6.0 or below, you're doing really well. Over the five years that I've shown, we met that goal two of the five years, super close, a third year at 6.06, but we have a little bit of room for improvement. You know, additionally, when we separate out our Caucasian population and our African-American population, the rates unfortunately for infant mortality and most of the other outcomes are about double for African-American population, in a way that is not good. So we do have some room for improvement, hence the need for a great program that we can implement here. Next. So baby care. It is a nurse-directed case management home visiting program for maternity patients and pediatrics up to age two. It takes a holistic approach, so it's not just medical and, you know, physical and emotional mental health, but it's also looking at support systems, it's looking at housing, it's looking at other determinants of health, and trying to shore those up so that the baby coming into the world has the best possible start that they could have. It's outcomes-oriented, so we actually have very distinct measures and have been able to show that this program works well. And the nurse goes into the home, gets to know the patient, but then works with the medical providers, and helps her, the woman's healthcare provider, you know, outreach to other community resources, helps the patient understand what her provider is saying, and really acts as a wonderful bridge in the link to other services. Outcomes. These numbers speak for themselves, and the baby was just really cute, as I know. Don't you just want to tickle the cheeks, man? But the numbers, the numbers are what's really important here. And you can see that in the study, and I was fortunate, when I was over at Chesapeake, I actually conducted this study in this data analysis. Chesapeake has the baby program, that we would be responsible for mirroring the fidelity of their program. Looked at almost 300 baby care patients, matched them up with 300 non-baby care patients but at-risk pregnancies really well, and we had this reduction, you know, with the baby care clients. So down, infant mortality down by about 67 percent. You know, you can see birth rates, low birth rate in prematurity was down, but more importantly, that extremely low birth weight, that extremely premature was down significantly, because you take a baby who's born extremely low birth weight, that delivery in and of itself cost about $90,000, as opposed to about $1,000 for a regular pregnancy. And then there
What are you talking about? It's a business decision.
It backs it up. That's, you know, if, I remember years ago, and I say this because I don't think any of the legislators were, that were serving years ago, or the ones that were down, I'm gonna give you that caveat. But in the late 80s, early 90s, you know, Virginia Beach had this reputation for being a wealthy city, okay? That we didn't have these type of situations occurring in Virginia Beach. And they had a formula, I don't know if that formula's still in place or not. We kept hearing about this formula, that because of the way we were rated as more of a wealthy city, we didn't get hardly any money for these type of problems. And matter of fact, some of us went to Toward Healthcare, Old Beach General, we got a $40,000 grant, if y'all remember. And for them, it was a business decision. Give us the money to give to you, so that they get the prenatal care, the deliveries are not as costly, the stay in the hospital's not as long, and not to mention, you're providing a healthy child. I mean, and so it's a good thing, as you just said, feeling, but business-wise, and this is what gets me, why doesn't everyone see this? We should fund this money more, I mean, it's just a good business decision.
I wholeheartedly concur. That was so well stated. Thank you.
If this is something that's thrown my mind since I ever got on council, I mean, really, it has.
Wonderful.
And keep being a grandfather helps too.
Wonderful.
It's still there, Mayor. The state formula is still there.
But you remember?
Oh, I sure do.
Excuse me.
So, and this is wonderfully outcomes-based, you know, and Mr. Batten, in his letter of support and statement for the grant, said it needs to continue to be outcomes-based. We need to continue to show good measures. And I have absolutely no doubt we will be able to accomplish that, so. And then last, here's our proposed budget. You can see there's an equivalent of five FTEs, so we have four full-time, two part-time people that would be covered by this. 93 percent of our cost is in personnel, you know, then we have some of the operational cost in the Health Department, honestly, will absorb the remainder, you know, of those within kinds. The grant currently is written for three years, but Mr. Batten has said that if we show the outcomes and we continue doing well, he would like to continue funding that. No, I'm not asking for a single penny from the city, you know, and I'm doing this with the knowledge that if the grants were to go away, the FTEs would go away. So, that's it. What questions do you have?
Anybody else have any questions or comments? We thank you very much.
I would like to say, you know, thanks to Mr. Batten for doing this, but also, as somebody philanthropic, to be able to see how your money is being sent and results, this is results-driven, and for a healthy community, and it's very exciting that he stepped up to do this.
All right, thank you again.
Thank you for your time today.
I'm gonna suggest, you know, we're gonna go right into the road program, which is quite important, but I'm gonna suggest we bring pending planning items after that, and do the financial statements after that, if we have time, because we're gonna, you know, I know this would be a relatively long presentation on it.
Yes, sir.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, it, we ought to be able to do this in 45 minutes.
Okay, but then we'll go to pending planning, so if anyone's listening from the planning department, we'll do that, and, because the financial statements aren't gonna change, we can get that. financial statements aren't gonna change, we can get that. All right.
So are we taking a break, or are we up?
Yes, sir. Phil, we're glad to have you again. I remember this a year ago.
Yes, sir. Um, well, good afternoon, Mayor, and members of council. Today, I'll provide a briefing on the roadway projects in the current CIP. Let me make sure I can click this right. Is this, uh, am I clicking this? There you go. All right. Um, I plan on talking about some recent accomplishments and going over the individual project detail sheets. Items three, four, and five are information on the proposed FY16 CIP that you have in your packet, and we can go over those or not when we get to that point. Got a click here. Here we go. Recent accomplishments. We have completed several projects over the last year included on this project, and I have charts for two or three of these. First one here is Princess Anne Four, the widening of Princess Anne Road from Dam Neck down to the Municipal Center and then over to Holland. It was completed in June of 2014. Nemo Parkway, a new four-lane roadway with a bridge connecting Holland to General Booth Boulevard. This was completed in September 2014.
Everybody likes that road.
Everybody likes that. I get a lot of compliments. It's taken a lot of traffic off of Princess Anne Road. Seaboard Road, this is a three-lane roadway that, from Princess Anne Road connecting to the new Nemo, and it was completed and opened to traffic in September of 2014 to coincide when...
Anything other than in Princess Anne?
When Nemo was open.
I'm just getting ready to ask.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jones. I've seen you pick on them many a time. I'm here for you now, buddy.
Well, here we go. We have a lot of projects under construction in other parts of the city. Uh, these right here are a number of the projects underway. Uh, I'll show a chart for two or three of these with some pretty pictures. Lesnar Bridge. Uh, here's a photo of Lesnar Bridge, and this is the first pier being formed for the, for the bridge. It is on schedule for June 2017 completion. Pacific Avenue, um, from 15th Street to 23rd Street. This project's being constructed in three phases. The first phase is for duck bank installation along with total roadway reconstruction, public utilities, and sidewalks. It'll be completed in April of this year. The second and third phases will commence over the next consecutive winters, with the second phase being in from 15 to 16, and the third one from 16 to 17, and that'll be total project completion in May, in May of 2017. Lynn Haven 11, four-lane roadway connecting Indian River to Kempsville is approximately 15% complete. It's on schedule for September 2016. Mr. Dyer's not here.
So we should name this the Bobby Dyer Road.
Great project. A new, a new connection over to Chesapeake and over to, uh, Volva. Holland Road Phase Six will widen Holland Road to four lanes from Nemo to Dam Neck. Completion is scheduled, uh, it's under construction as of November this year. Completion's on schedule for October of 2017. We've also began LED streetlight initiative that I wanted to show you guys. We will begin installing LED streetlights on all our new roadway corridors. The city will own and maintain these lights versus the older way of doing it with Virginia Power with the high-pressure sodium, um, type of light. The picture here is Princess Anne Four, the first one that we're installing them on. It's, it's under construction now. The lights are going up and should be done in March. We'll follow through after this project with PA Kempsville, Nemo, Westland, and Seaboard, all the projects completing. We're gonna install the LED streetlights. Now I'll go over the individual projects rather quickly, and I'm gonna do these in two, uh, two groups. The first group is fully funded projects. These projects I'm going over right now are fully funded in the current six-year CIP. Buckner Boulevard, this is a, um, a new project, a shared-use path to provide, provided along Buckner from Rosemont to Rica Drive. We're awarded the, we were awarded this with a TAP funding, which is Transportation Alternative Program funding, federal funding that we got from the state. Design is underway, and construction will begin in March of 2016. Cavalier Drive, this project's funding for our cost share for the roadway improvements to support the Cavalier Hotel. It'll provide two-lane roadway from Pacific to Holly. The improvements, both the design and construction, are being done by the developer. This funding is just our cost share for this project. And the developer's schedule is May 16, 20 completion. May 16 completion, I'm sorry. Centerville Turnpike Phase Two, this is a project will widen Centerville to four lanes from Indian River to Kempsville. Sound walls will be included in this project, probably, possibly. Project's moving into the acquisition phase. A public hearing was held last week, and it was very favorable. All the comments were, were positive. Construction start is scheduled for July of 2018. Farrell Parkway, this is a new project put into the CIP last year. Will widen Farrell Parkway to six lanes from Indian Lakes to Indian River Road. This section of Farrell ranks number four in the city on the most congested list. Design will begin in 2018. Now, you'll notice some of these projects, we don't start till later years, like 2018, 19, or 20. That's because they're new projects in the CIP. Funding is not allocated till that year, but we're, we're putting them in there. They're very worthy, worthy projects. They're just in the CIP at a later date. First Colonial Virginia Beach Boulevard, this intersection project will be improved, improve this intersection here by adding turn lanes, upgrading the signal, and widening First Colonial to six lanes, pretty much the entire length. We're in the acquisition phase, scheduled for a late 2016 construction start. Greenwell Road Sidewalk, this is a new project that was awarded TAP funding, that same funding source I mentioned earlier. We were successful and got about four or five projects for that, so it's new. It will provide a sidewalk from First Court to Shore along Greenwell. Design's underway, and construction will start in October of 2016. Greenwich Road Crossover and Cleveland Street Improvements, Phases One and Two. This project provides for the improvements to Cleveland Clearfield intersection in advance of VDOT's I-64, I-264 interstate project along with the Greenwich crossover. Basically, this city project will prepare the corridor for the Greenwich crossover. Phase One is to pipe a major canal, provide parking lot improvements for adjacent property owners. It's under construction right now and will be completed in March. Phase Two will realign the actual intersection and provide signal improvements in the realignment of the intersection. It's under design. It'll be completed in March of 2016. There's a third phase that's not funded, but I'll show later in my presentation. Holland Road Phase Six, another urban, major urban project that's underway. It's VDOT-managed, under construction to widen Holland Road from two to four lanes from Dam Neck to, to Nemo Parkway. It's under construction, like I said, as of November, and will be completed in September of 2017. Indian River Kempsville, Mr. Dyer, another Mr. Dyer project here in his, his district.
Should move them all since he's not here right now.
This is a innovative intersection design project.
I've got a spot right there.
I'm gonna kill you, fiscal therapist.
I'm sorry, Phil.
No, this is a good project. This is one, uh, one that will be, will get y'all's attention, I think. This will, um, we briefed you previously on this. We call it our Innovative Intersection Design Project. It'll provide indirect left turns on Kempsville and median U-turns on Indian River for one of the most congested intersections in the city. It's act, it's in acquisition phase, ending and going to construction later this year. The Indian River Princess Anne Interim Intersection, do I have that right? I'm sorry. Yes. The Princess Anne, Indian River Interim Intersection Project's another Miss Henley project here. This is, uh, 250,000 put in the CIP a couple of years ago to provide a, a left turn lane at that intersection in conjunction with the developer's development. He hasn't come through with his development yet, so the money is sitting there, waiting for him to, uh, to do his development. This would be our share for him to put the turn lane in with his development. Indian River Road Providence Intersection Improvement Project, this project's providing improvements on Indian River Road at the intersection back to Level Green, eliminating that trap lane. If any of you guys have driven there recently, you'll know that that trap lane there is, is problematic. It also relocates the signal at Level Green, upgrades the signal at Providence. Fully funded, design is nearing completion. Construction will go, will happen later this year. Kendall Road, Kendall Street Sidewalk, another one of the TAP projects I mentioned earlier. We got TAP funding for this just recently, brand-new kicking off. It'll provide a sidewalk along Kendall Street from Admiral to Shore. Design just got underway, and will hopefully go to construction in October of 2017. Landstown Road Improvements, uh, this project is to widen Landstown Road from the Sportsplex to the bend there and, um, at the end of Landstown, from, widen it from two to four lanes. The project supports the proposed baseball complex and the other parks and rec facilities planned in that area. Design's underway, and construction will start in March of 2016. Lynn Haven Parkway Phase 11, as I showed you a picture of earlier, widening from two to four lanes. Indian River to Centerville's underway. Construction's 15% done, completed, and it will be done in September of 2016. Newtown Baker, uh, this project will add turn lanes and reconfigure the intersection there at Newtown and Baker to reduce congestion. Design will begin in 2017 when funding becomes available. Nemo George Mason, right here in the Municipal Center area, uh, this project will add a new signal at Nemo and George Mason, right at the Harris Teeter Shopping Center, and provide median modifications just down at the next opening there in front of the Wendy's to, you know, to address accident situation. The signal is a requirement by the shopping center, so they're providing some of the funding. Design is all complete. Construction is imminent any day now, hopefully as soon as next week, and it'll be completed and operational in June. Pacific Avenue, I spoke of earlier. I had the pictures, um, showed the photo. The first phase, we're constructing the duck bank and reconstructing the roadway. It's about 50% complete. It is on schedule for late April. Phase Two will be done in May 2016, and Phase Three, May of 2017.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Jump in anytime.
All of this is within that same area? It's not moving down Pacific each time? It's, it's repeating the same area?
Yes. It's from 15th to 23rd.
Okay.
And I, I probably didn't describe what the three phases are. The first phase, they're just tearing up the road, putting in the duck bank under the road. Second phase, next year, they'll be pulling the cable, the private utility companies taking down the poles. The third year's when all the street improvements will happen with the signals, streetscapes. So it's a three-year thing, a three-year thing, but you, but it'll be, you'll see improvements every year.
These businesses then are impacted for three years.
The major impact is this year, right now, and we're, we're working through it.
Like, I, again, I'm sure John's heard more than I did, but like, I know on 17th Street, there was a lot of concern, but we moved quickly, had the staff did a heck of a job, and to the extent they came and said, "Thank you for the quick work the staff had done." And they, this well sign, good signage put together and everything.
Oh, they put some really good signage. Better signage than I've seen done in the past.
But anyway.
We have that set up, so they have to be, they couldn't start till October 1st. They have to be done by the end of April, so that's, that's the tenet of that project. Uh, these pleasure, pleasure house, the next two projects, pleasure house Phase One and Phase Two. They improved pleasure house from North Hampton up to Shore, and then from Shore to Lookout. Uh, there, it's new curb and gutter, new storm drainage, new sidewalks. Funding is not available yet, but design will begin in 2018. This is the second phase up to Lookout. Princess Anne Gumbridge Road, another, another project under construction in Miss Henley's district, uh, one of the rural road projects. It's a turn lane to address safety. It is about 80% complete, will be done here in March.
I'll tell you what, that, that thing has been in the list to do for about eight years, so it's, it's a big time.
I didn't say that.
It's like wine.
And the second rural road project is PA Pleasant Ridge, same sort of project at this intersection, uh, and this, this stretch of road to add shoulders and to add a turn lane. It is in the acquisition phase, going to construction later this year in May. Princess Anne Road Phase Seven. This will widen Princess Anne Road from General Booth down to Sand Bridge and extend over to Fisher Arch. I'm sorry, we, we extended this project, if you will, down to Fisher Arch where the Catholic, Catholic Church is. And that project is fully funded, in the acquisition phase, and it'll go to construction in July of 2016. Providence Road Sidewalk, this project is for safety improvements along Providence from Kempsville to Indian Lakes. It'll begin in 2019, design. Rosemont Road Phase Five, this project is fully funded to widen Rosemont Road to four lanes from Dam Neck to Lynn Haven, address congestion in the corridor. Design's underway. Construction is started, is slated to start in 17. Sand Bridge Road Bridge Replacement, this is one of the three bridges that we have that are failing in the city. It is fully funded here. Design is complete. We will, I'm sorry, design is 30% complete, and we will go into construction in 2018 when funding becomes available. Ship's Corner Road, this project will improve the curve between Holland and London Bridge Road, add a turn lane into the neighborhood. Design is underway, about 90% complete, and January 2017 is when construction will begin. Shore Drive Bike Facility, this is another TAP project that we got partially funded with the TAP funding. Uh, the project will add four-foot paved shoulders to both sides of Shore Drive from Diamond Springs down to Greenwell. It also includes resurfacing of the existing roadway. The design is 90% complete. Construction will begin in July of this year.
You took away all your road money.
Shore Drive Phase Three.
You just lost millions of dollars.
Do we have a bake sale?
I missed all your good projects, but I told them about Centerville, and we got great, great comments from the public hearing.
I really appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And I apologize for being late, caught traffic. Somebody's gotta do something about it in this area. But, but thank you very much, and, you know, thank the staff for coming out. You're most cordial to the public.
Shore Drive Phase Three, this project is fully funded. We're currently at the 60% design phase. It'll provide safety improvements in the on-road bike facility from Lesnar Bridge down to Great Neck, a project at 60% design, and it will go to construction in November of 2017. Upton Drive Extension Dam Neck Station Improvement Project, this project will provide a new signal at the, at the General Booth Dam Neck Station intersection and improvements to the existing signal at Dam Neck and Upton. This project's being delivered through a cost participation with the developer, and if I can show you real quick, the developer of General Booth Dam Neck Development here, basically this whole area, and he's building a road that connects these two. He's designing and building, so our participation is funding, and he will do the design and construction of the improvements needed at both those intersections that will be needed, you know, because of his development. I mean, they don't warrant the traffic signal improvements, but there will be safety issues that, which there are now, that this project will address. Construction is scheduled to start this fall at his schedule. Witch Duck Road Phase Two, this project's another one of our major urban projects, fully, fully funded. It will widen Witch Duck Road to six lanes from I-264 to Virginia Beach Boulevard. Project's in the acquisition phase. Construction start is scheduled for March of 2016. All right. Those are all the fully funded projects in the, in the program. There's just a few that have a BTC, meaning a balance to complete, and that's what I'll go over now, and these are in alphabetical order. And you can see, like, this first one, BTC in the red box, that means there's $26 million needed to complete this project. Centerville Turnpike Phase Three, this would connect where Centerville Two ended there at Kempsville and take it down to Lynn Haven Parkway or Chesapeake Line. Funding is programmed to allow design to begin in 2017, and the balance to complete, like I say, is shown in the red box. Elbow Road Extended, this project's our next highest-ranked urban project. Get it and funded. There's safety issues along Elbow Road as, as well as congestion issues. We're in the acquisition phase. We're moving to completion of acquisition. It is funded through that. Incidentally, operations, Republic Works Operations will be doing some major bridge rehab on the small bridge that's on Elbow Road this year, just because it's in such bad shape. First Colonial Alaskan, this project provides a turn lane at the First Colonial Alaskan intersection. It's funded federal funding in an out year. It's only gonna be implemented if Alaskan One project doesn't go to construction. The Greenwich Road Crossover, Cleveland Street that I mentioned earlier, Phases One and Two at the Cleveland Clearfield, this is Phase Three. This provides improvements on Cleveland Street from Clearfield down to Witch Duck, all in anticipation of the I-64, I-264 interstate project with Greenwich flyover. We have some design money, so we'll begin that, but we do not have funding for construction on that one yet. Indian River Road Phase Seven, another one of our major urban projects. Indian River Road Phase 7, another one of our major urban projects. We have funding for acquisition. It provides four lanes, widened four lanes from Lynnhaven to Elbow. We're in the acquisition phase with a huge balance to complete. Alaskan Road Phase 1, this project will widen Alaskan Road from 6 and 8 lanes from Republic to Oriole. It's a VDOT-administered project. It's, incidentally, this is our last legacy project in the city. By legacy project, I mean our last VDOT-administered project, the old way, where they used to administer all our projects. So we administer all of our projects from here forward. Design is done, acquisition's done, utility relocations are almost complete. This project could go to construction early next year if VDOT funds it, so we're waiting to see their funding strategy. Oh, yes, sir.
So with respect to being a legacy project, is that something that VDOT does statewide now, or is that just something that we do?
They do administer a lot of projects for a lot of localities. We are one of the only, the only locality in the state that administers all our projects under a specific program called the UCI program, where we get a lot of efficiencies and a lot of benefits. So, yes.
Do we save money, do we get to keep it?
Well, we do, we do save money by administering on our own projects, yes, sir.
But we get to keep it or use it on other projects?
Well, you know, we're, yes, yes, we do. I mean, we're putting in so much money anyway. You know, VDOT's putting very little money on projects now, so it...
I just remember when this project first, or this concept first started, I don't know, eight or 10 years ago, VDOT was completely against any costs, cost sharing at all. It was just strictly, you know, we could administer it, but we couldn't, we couldn't tap the savings, so, you know, to the extent there is, it's nice that we can keep a little bit of it.
Well, in the old days, they used to, it used to be about 98%, 2%, 2% local match, 98% state-funded. Well, that's gone totally the opposite way. There's many projects where we're putting 50, 60, 70% of the funding, so it just makes sense that we're administering them. Alaskan Road Phase 2, this project links to this one. It goes from Oriole down to the 30, basically the roundabout now, widening that road to six lanes. It's in the concept design stage. Alaskan Road Bridge, we developed this CIP project to get in here. It's within the Alaskan 1 footprint, but this bridge is failing as well, so if, if the VDOT doesn't come through with Alaskan 1 funding, we're going to have to look at, you know, funding this bridge over Linkhorn Bay. We've got a little bit of money for design, but a huge balance to complete.
One question, and you can answer it later on. At what point do they come to deterioration such that we have to post weight limitation signs because of the deterioration factor?
There is a number. I don't know what that is offhand. I don't know if my...
I'm going to CIP review, I'm just curious if the...
Let me try to answer that a little bit if I can, and the answer is, when they start getting to that point, we go in and we do enough maintenance rehabilitation to keep it up to where we don't have to post it. At some point, it will get so bad that we will, but, you know, as long as we can go in and do some maintenance work and rehab it, we do it, and we keep them going and keep the traffic on them.
I just, I would just like to be better educated. I think the council, just know what risks we're taking on those, just so we understand it.
The sufficiency rating is a combination of structural sufficiency and the, and the geometrics of the roads. There's not a number per se, rather, it's a structural analysis that every year the bridges have to be inspected, and our structural engineer pines as to whether it's still good for the weight that's going on. Not so much a number.
So we won't know until we post the signs?
When a structural analysis says, says so.
Well, Lesnar Bridge was close to reaching that point, so we are in the, in the midst of implementing a $120 million project. I showed you a picture earlier, it's under construction. The reason why this slides up here with the BTC, even though this project is under construction, are there are two things going on. When we opened bids, we did get some relatively high bids. The state ponied up some money, but they promised us 3.8 million in contingency funding. So that's 3.8 out of the 6.8. The other 3 million is anticipated overages in acquisition costs that we haven't settled on, but we're anticipating having to settle a little more than what we budgeted. That's a total of 6.8. It's not going to impact us finishing construction, so we're moving on. It's just 6.8 that we, a max, we could end up having to go to. Lynnhaven International, this is a project to improve the intersection here at Lynnhaven International with turn lanes. We're currently reevaluating the scope of this project in light of new traffic patterns that have developed since we opened up the London Bridge ramps. This project may or may not have to be re-scoped, and, you know, traffic isn't as bad here as it was since we opened up the ramps. Princess Anne 7A, this is a link to Princess Anne 7 in Miss Henley's district. This is to improve Princess Anne Road from Seaboard down to Indian River Road with shoulders, no widening. This is just shoulders. And then at the Princess Anne Indian River intersection, that's a horrible intersection that needs a lot of work, we're considering things such as a roundabout, possibly.
You ought to hear what people say when I tell them that.
We may not be considering it when we take it out to the public.
We've got a plan in Jersey I can talk to you about.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think folks are very anxious to have something done, or even
willing to listen to the roundabout idea, but that total cost and say, "Oh, my."
I heard it aplenty at 31st Street until, and then, and then I've heard the same people come back and say, "Boy, this really works great."
It does. It works really good.
You can get your jug handle up.
It does, it works better than people think.
It's got to be wide enough for a combine, right? Round and round the combines go.
The Sand Bridge Nemo 7A project is to address issues geometrically and, well, basically geometrically on Sand Bridge Road. It'll provide ultimate roadway, Sand Bridge-Nemo Parkway, from Sam Piper back out west to about a mile. Preliminary design, environmental works underway. It's not fully funded. Shore Drive Phase 4, this is the, to provide safety improvements on Shore Drive from Lesnar out to Marlin Bay. Currently at 30% design, not fully funded. I can take questions here. I have these last three sections here of the proposed FY16 CIP.
Rosemary.
Well, I want to ask the famous John question. When you look at the BTCs and all of this, and John, we've had a few years ago, we've got all these buckets of money with all the different monies in there, and that's what we did. We poured some monies in different buckets so that some things actually got built. Do we need to look at the, the ones that are not fully funded yet and combine buckets of money to actually get some of these built if we don't think that they'll be built? And I give John credit, that was a great question a few years ago.
I mean, that's a strategy. I think what we've done as staff with, with Council's blessing, as we have attacked these projects and, you know, in the various categories of safety congestion, we have special projects that come up, like the, the one we did at 31st Street, and I think we're, you know, we're ticking them off. We have, we do studies that show the most unsafe projects in the city and the most congested, and we try to prioritize in that way. And then we also go after a lot of competitively obtained funding.
I mean, you think that these are all going to be fully funded, then?
I think so. There's a couple of the larger ones, like Elbow and Indian River, that are upwards 70 or 60 million, have BTC. We may need to look at something like phasing, possibly, and also, I don't know if the city's going to be able to put that much funding towards them. I think we're really going to need some help from the state and feds on those two.
Just asking, under recent accomplishments, where are we? With Kempsville, I've heard Kempsville, Indian River, Kempsville, what about Kempsville, Princess Anne, where are we?
We're almost done. We're reporting, mate, we're reporting in May. Quite frankly, you know, we added a lot of work to that project, as hopefully council's well aware of. We had a lot of the economic vitality initiatives that were going on while we were trying to build the road, so we had the contractor divert and do work, utility relocations and other things. So we've added a lot to his plate. Quite frankly, he's...
You have the sea level rise that you did raise, you know?
Yes, ma'am. We've had some issues. The contractor is behind schedule right now, and we're pushing him. We're, quite frankly, in liquidated damages come early February, but we're going to push him to get complete as soon as possible. We think he can be done in March. He's telling us May.
All right, John.
As we're looking at, and I know I've mentioned this earlier in formal sessions, as we're looking at what we're trying to achieve, I know traffic congestion is safety, but since we're also trying to grow our economy, I don't know where in the thought process, what we're trying to do with fire tech, or whatever we're trying to do from a job creation point of view, is there something that would cause us to relook at the priorities and how we, what money we're, as Rosemary was mentioning, would, if that was something, is there, listen more about the CIP coming forward as these projects, which of these projects, a lot of what we know, would make a bigger difference, or would aid us in terms of trying to grow our economic development competitiveness? You know, that more investments in, maybe something in Burton Station we have to, I don't know, but I think that's a factor we at least ought to actively consider and evaluate as we go on this next CIP is, if we're trying to set a foundation, because growing the economy and growing jobs has to be a priority, are some of these projects, are there some projects that we might, that should be on the list, and should we be thinking that, if that's a consideration? I don't have the answer, but I'd like to have your insight. And I went through and just did my rough Radcon math as you walked through there, and not counting discounts, that was $290.8 million of BTC. I don't think we're going to be expecting any big help from the feds, so I wouldn't be holding my breath for that, but, nor from the state. So I think either one, we relook, or something, I know I've mentioned to you before, Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor, is whether or not, maybe not this year, but maybe two or three years out, do we really want to engage the public in a bond referendum for roads to accelerate some of these projects? Because I don't know any other way we're going to make material kind of progress. We might want to make sure to some substantial capital infusion. I don't know how we get there when I look at those numbers. That's finally...
If I could just comment, Mr. Mayor, I think that's a really great point, and we pulled out, this is just the roadway section of the CIP, so John's answer is correct. I mean, we need to look at the whole document. We do this every year because traditionally, transportation and roadways have been your highest priority. So we just, and we get a lot of questions about it, so we thought we'd just give you the, the package on roadways, but you really need to wait till you get the whole document, and then you start making those trade-offs.
I've got Barbara, John, and Bobby.
Well, I think the staff just does an absolutely fantastic job of keeping up with the roads and building as many roads as we have been able to do, particularly all through the recession and so forth. And, and I think we've got a lot of wonderful projects underway, and I think this, I noticed when you were saying in this balance to complete, some of them were, well, if we don't do that, then we'll need to do this, so there may be some duplicates in there. And I think you're probably going to get to some of this, but these requested above-target projects, I'm thinking about all the projects that were not in here that, you know, really are important too, and, and I think that gets along with what, what John was saying. In my neck of the woods, a lot of it comes down to safety because we're still on, you know, very substandard roads for, you know, what's getting to be an awful lot of traffic, and some of the things that, you know, council has even talked about, like West Neck Road and, you know, the ultimate completion of something to Sand Bridge and other things too, that, that aren't even in here. We've got an enormous amount of really unmet need as far as, as our roads and transportation goes, and I guess that, and this modeling that is being done, of when is that going to be complete, and how is that going to help us make decisions along the lines of, you know, what we really do have to go forward and not?
I think what Mr. Henley's referring to is through Planning's comp plan, updated their comp plan this year, there is an initiative that I'm helping them with to model the whole city as part of the update to the master transportation plan. We have a consultant working on that, three or four months, so they'll be done in March, April timeframe. I don't think that will be in time for us to influence the FY16 CIP, maybe some, but definitely in the FY17 CIP, because that'll tell us what, what projects we may not need any longer, or what other roads we need to look at. So I'm thinking in the FY17 CIP.
So maybe then for next year, or I guess from the time that modeling is complete, until we do next year's budget, we'll have an opportunity to really look at this broad transportation question and come up with a possible resolution.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
John Earn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first thing I'd like to say is, I mean, this is a pretty thick PowerPoint. I mean, we should be really proud of the amount of projects, meaningful projects that we have going on in this city right now. And the second point I'd like to make is really to look back at, the reason why we have been successful in having such a thick packet, is that during these time periods, even though we did not know how we were going to plan to pay for each one of these things, we kept going forward and designing it and doing those things. I mean, take a look at what we'd be talking, we wouldn't even be talking about Lesnar Bridge right now, but the fact that the city staff encouraged us, and we ultimately made the decision to continue funding, the design of that meant that we were ready when funding became available. And so, you know, to that end, you know, I'm excited to see, even though it's scary to see that we don't have a plan for funding all these, and we recognize there are needs above and beyond what we have in this packet, you know, the fact that we're continuing to do that means that we're going to be more successful, I think, than any other city in the state, Mr. Mayor, and I commend the staff for encouraging us to continue to do the right thing here.
Bobby?
Yeah, thank you. I'm very grateful to staff and council, you know, a lot of money's coming into Centerville to help our road congestion out, which we have quite a bit. And I was just going to ask, you know, just, you know, the Phase 3 of Centerville.
Yes, sir.
That's got a $26 million ticket on it, which I know is very expensive, but what that would do, would actually complete, you know, from Indian River Road all the way to the Chesapeake Line, and also with Lynnhaven 11, which is now in progress, you know, would help out tremendously. Would there be any consideration or merit to, you know, just even run it to save a little money upfront, just to Lynnhaven, you know, so we can have the connector there?
I was kind of looking at that map when they, you know, how long would that be? It didn't look like a big distance.
No, you know, actually, that may actually be where that project needs to end anyway. We show it going to the Chesapeake City line, but you're exactly right, Mr. Dyer, that, but when you do Lynnhaven 11, it may just need to connect right there at, at Lynnhaven.
It didn't look like that big of a distance.
That's still, though, most of the distance, though. I don't know the break, though. I think, I think it, you know...
Because my rationale would be, you know, Phil Davenport last year came out, and, you know, we took a look at Woods Corner with the front part of which is deteriorating quite a bit, and one of the reasons we're having access problems into, you know, that particular strip mall, and perhaps with the widening or stuff, we might be able to improve the access into it and encourage, you know, like John said, if a project, road project can help with economic development, but I think if we could maybe find a compromise like, you know, the mayor indicated, stop it at Lynnhaven if we can save some money, and that would help, you know, perhaps expedite, it might be in our interest.
We're definitely going to look at that. That was the one comment we got at the public meeting last Thursday, was please do Centerville 3, extend it, and then the gentleman that owns the pizza restaurant there across from Woods Corner, he was very adamant about looking at entrance improvements and producing that. Yeah, I guess you can see right here, there's Lynnhaven. So most of the project is from Kempsville to Lynnhaven, it's just this last little piece here. But we'll definitely look at the, you know, right here as part of our project there.
Okey-dokey. What else we got?
I don't really need to, I would probably, Tony, can you go to Chart 65? I think you guys, I won't do the last three sections, but I think it would be beneficial if I showed you the transportation funding slide. It's number 65, I believe. We prepared this just to show what, what council's approved as far as city funding, and back to Mr. Earn's point about us putting city funding on here, if you go to the first click here, this is historically the allocations of city funding for transportation, actual allocations from '04 to '16. The blue represents city local funding. The, the hatched blue from '17 to '21 shows future city, based on the targets that Budget Office has given us this year. And if you go to the next slide, the red here, this is competitively obtained funding that the city staff have gotten through CMAC and RSDP and revenue share, other grant funding, and those are actual amounts that we've gotten from '05 to '16. The next slug, which is important here to see, is the, the yellow is the urban, state, state urban funding that we got from '04 to '10, and you can see from '11 on, it went to zero. There's no state funding, so we're left with what the city puts in and the red COF funding. And the next, then two things happened. In 2009, the purple that you just popped up there, the ARA funding funded three projects, PA 4, Witch Duck 1, and the London Bridge ramps, to the tune of about $40 million.
What's ARA?
The American reinvestment and re...
Stimulus money.
Stimulus money. President Obama stimulus money. 2011, Governor McDonnell, we were successful in getting $158 million, Mr. Mayor, for four projects, Lesnar Bridge, Lynnhaven 11, Holland 6, and Witch Duck 2, and that's why you see those big slugs in the green of GTP funding. And the average, Tony, if you pop the average screen up there, that, of all those funding sources, that's about $52 million a year, and you can see we've exceeded that in a couple of years, been below it, but you can see, and currently, we're well below it, and then as we go, 17 on, unless we have some other slugs of funding, or unless, which we will, go out there and try to get COF funding, we're going to be well below the average. So those are the two takeaways, I think, from this, is going forward, we're going to be a little short.
Go quickly through these, rest of these projects, so that we get this feeling of just what's out there that we want.
I can surely do that.
Because I think some of these are really big.
I'm sure most of them are Princess Anne, so we'll, we'll just listen a little bit longer.
67.
But there was a [inaudible] for biomedical.
Oh, now we're going for mine, okay.
Go ahead, Phil.
This will only take a second. These are above-target projects that were presented to the caucus today, and I know in advance of you guys, but the caucus will be meeting on these and going over them. This is, this is 10 in alphabetical order, and I'll go over these real quick. The first one is, this will replace the Atlantic Avenue traffic signal pole replacements, will replace seven pole, traffic signal poles at seven critical intersections down in the Beach, Beach Borough. These are badly deteriorated and above any sort of maintenance needs. These all need to be replaced to the tune of $1.75 million. Holland Rosemont, this intersection improvement project, this will reconstruct this entire intersection to address capacity and safety issues. This actually happened to be the number one ranked intersection in all of Hampton Roads, not just Virginia Beach, by the TPO as far as accident rates. Now, this is a huge, huge number here, $56 million. These next few projects, Mr. Moss, you addressed this, and I think this addresses your concern. Landstown 2, 3, and 4, these are brand-new projects in the Princess Anne Commons ITA area, just developed through that committee, the ITA and PA Commons Area Committee, to support planned development in this area. This is Landstown Road Phase 2, which picks up where the current Landstown Road ends and goes down 4,200 linear feet as a four-lane divided parkway, $19 million project. Landstown 3 picks up there and goes to North Landing Road, $12 million project, four-lane divided parkway.
Now, so that, that looks to go through property that must, needs to be taken?
Most of, for Landstown 2, 3, and 4, almost all that project, property is city-owned.
Okay.
I think that's Brenneman Farm.
Right.
I think that one is.
But I, I think the critical thing about these projects is, is that this ITA area, in order to do any development, any use of it for industrial development, these roads are going to have to be there. And we don't, we can't do anything with these roads without accessibility.
But having it wide away is could be a big help.
Yeah, well.
There will be. They're just lines on the map now, no engineering done at all. Phase 4, it just picks, I think that's Brenneman Farm, maybe I have that wrong. And that goes from North Landing down to Indian River Road.
That's Brenneman.
The next project, Lesnar Bridge, we had that on there, I talked about that earlier. This is because of the 6.8 million shortfall. Nemo Parkway Phase 2 and 3, again, this is in the ITA area. This is on the Master Street and Highway Plan. This would connect Nemo Parkway where it ends right here as a four-lane divided parkway, and it would extend over to the North Landing Indian River intersection, again, to support the ITA area. And Princess Anne Road Commons A is what it's been named. This is a, a road, again, just a line on the map, but this is a critical road for this PA Commons area, Parks and Rec. It supports development in the area. Two-lane undivided parkway extending out, connecting to Tournament Drive, I believe. Salem Road Extended, again, another project in the ITA area, four-lane divided, extending from where Salem ends down to North Landing Road, or actually down to Nemo Parkway where that would come through, $35 million project. West Neck Phase 4, now this one isn't in the ITA area, but this is a project to improve West Neck Road, keep it at two lanes, but to improve it from where it ends at, or where the improvements ended, about Kellum High School, down to where you see it stopping there, Southern Curve. That lines up with where a proposed development, King's Landing, I believe it is, in this vacant area here, they've come to us, or they, they've got a subdivision that's, that's imminent. So this roadway really needs improving. And we've been talking with them and working with them, and it could be a cost participation type of agreement here.
We've deferred it in December and deferred it for 90 days for some work. So this will be coming back to council in March.
And that is it. That is about 10.
You know, Phil, and Phil, and Dave, and y'all need to go back to everyone, you know, how it works, and I think y'all heard a lot of nice compliments. And they're well-deserved, y'all have done a heck of a job. I mean, my hat's off to everyone there, y'all have done a great job, and please pass it on.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We really, we appreciate everything y'all doing for us.
All right.
Okay. We're going to go to planning items. And we're going to be out here by 6 o'clock. Planning.
Planning.
They switch the order. Didn't we?
You did.
Didn't you agree?
I did.
Okay, go see.
Anything you want, I...
Yeah, yeah.
I'm writing that down.
Jack, we're glad to have you.
Glad to be here. Happy New Year. This is the first glimpse of 2015, planning items to come. We have 13 items to go through, spread unevenly between the meetings of February 3rd and 17th. The theme, I think, for the first glimpse of the new year would have to be a toast to the new year, and you'll see the connection there here in a few minutes. I'll try to get through them fairly quickly. I know you've had a long afternoon. Beginning in the Bayside District on February 3rd, we have Leonard Lyon. This is a non-conforming use for an enlargement and relocation of two units off of Lee Avenue, near Seaview Avenue in Bayside. The applicant would like to enlarge and relocate two existing units that were constructed in the early 1940s. And as you're well aware, the zoning ordinance doesn't allow two units on one lot, and thus they are non-conforming. He would like to construct additions to both of these homes and relocate, relocate one of them, as you can see there, to more of the center of the site. As you're also well aware, the Planning Commission doesn't review non-conforming uses, so there is no Planning Commission recommendation. Staff, however, will, as we customarily do, provide you with an evaluation prior to your hearing of the matter. Remaining in Bayside, SUL Tranquility Lakes LLC in the Burton Station area is a request for modification of conditions. And this was deferred by you recently in order to, to work on the application a little bit further in its development. In 2010, you approved a use permit for senior housing on this property, subsequently modified two years later to add disabled persons with family members under the age of 62 as permitted residents of the facility. Project has not yet been constructed, but the applicant would like to expand the scope of the project by incorporating a 6,500 square foot city-owned parcel adjacent to Burton Station Road. You can see an elevation there. This will allow, if approved, architectural, architectural design of the proposed building, which was previously approved, to be more consistent with the recommendations of the Burton Station SGA plan, primarily in the areas of the front facades adjacent to the roads in the area. Staff had recommended approval. Planning Commission placed it on their consent agenda. There was no opposition to this item. Finally, on February 3rd, an ordinance to adopt amendments to the Princess Anne and Transition Area Policy Document portion of the comprehensive plan, and to amend the transition area design guidelines and incorporate them by reference into the comprehensive plan. This is work that's been undertaken by the Transition Area ITA Advisory Committee over a number of months, and they have been working recently very closely with the Planning Commission in order to refine those recommendations and get them into a form which will be acceptable to the city council for incorporation into the current comprehensive plan. That's the current comprehensive plan, not the one that's currently under review, and you will see later in the year. The city council had asked the Planning Commission to, within 60 days, come back to you with amendments for your consideration, and that's what you will have on the agenda in accordance with your wishes. Moving on to February 17th, we have 10 items, beginning with the city of Virginia Beach. This gets into my theme for, for this briefing. A zoning ordinance to allow craft distilleries and craft breweries in Virginia Beach in accordance with recent General Assembly actions last April, which allows distilleries exhibiting certain characteristics and licenses from the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. These distillery stores must adhere to those requirements, record-keeping, employee training, and advertising, and so forth. The new regulations will allow tasting events at these facilities where the customers can consume up to three one-half ounce samples per day. The amendments that are proposed to allow this are to the city zoning ordinance, which would include craft dist...
Where'd that come from? How, how did the arbiter?
General Assembly.
Well, that's General Assembly, excuse me.
Probably it's something after we do samples you can't drive away, maybe, I don't know. I'm not joking.
Did we interrupt you?
As, as I mentioned, this does relate to General Assembly actions according to, to So we need to amend the zoning ordinance to accommodate those if you so desire, and designate those zoning districts where by conditional use, they would be allowed. There's currently a portion of the zoning ordinance which would be deleted if this is approved, having to do with serving meals and clarifying that these facilities are allowed to sell beverage, beverages for off-premise consumption.
We've got a question from Jim Wood.
Jack, what about ones that are strictly manufacturing and wholesaling? Is that going to be addressed in this?
Yes. That'll be part of the amendment. So we've had inquiries already, and you'll see one here in a minute, interested in establishing such a brew pub in Virginia Beach. And you'll see that here shortly. Staff had recommended approval. Planning Commission placed it on their consent agenda, and there was no opposition to the proposed amendment.
Hey, Patty, I'm pretty sure we're not going to be able to do the financial statements, so please, hey, we'll get, we'll get you next week. Okay, Jim?
Yeah, and you've got it in the package.
I mean, we've got proof of, of the weekend, yeah. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Jack.
She might be able to go have a, have a drink now.
One-half ounces.
Bayside, Pembroke Square Associates, this is a conditional use permit off of Virginia Beach Boulevard and Constitution Drive. This is Pembroke Mall. Obviously, this is a request for indoor recreation, a bowling alley, actually, to be named Uptown Alley, one of the third such facilities in the United States. 50,000 square feet of space on the ground floor and mezzanine levels. It's basically a bowling alley, billiard tables, arcade games, dining, and bar facilities, live entertainment, and video. Staff had recommended approval with certain conditions. Planning Commission placed this on their consent agenda as well, and there was no Back to the theme again, in the Beach District, Chesapeake Bay Distillers, the Distillery LLC is looking for a use permit to build a craft distillery on Virginia Beach Boulevard in the corner of Baltic Avenue. It's a conditional use permit. They will operate the distillery in accordance with the new zoning ordinance regulations, if you enact them, as well as the ABC require, regulations. They will be sold, the products will be sold for off-premises consumption and some strictly monitored tasting events on premise. The applicant has worked with the Resort Beach Civic League to address concerns about the appropriateness for the location and operation of this facility, and the Civic League is in support of it. Staff had recommended approval. Planning Commission placed it on their consent agenda again. There was no opposition to a craft distillery at that location. Remaining in the Beach District, United States Management LLC, alternative compliance, this is the Arena project, looking for a special exception in order to accommodate the project within the confines of the Form-based Code requirements, which will necessitate your finding of a special exception, in their case, having to do with building type, dimensional requirements, and so forth. There you see the conceptual site plan of that project. The Arena, with its modern design, is unique and was not contemplated or provided for per se in the Form-based Code. Consequently, a major entertainment venue with respect to signage particularly would now be required for your approval. The Planning Commission has not considered this yet. They are, it's on their agenda for February 11th and will be expedited to you, and that's why it's on the briefing this afternoon. Leaping across town to Centerville District, Alexandria Place LLC, off of Lynn Haven Parkway, Monument Drive, just west of Centerville Turnpike, is a request for a zoning change from A12 to A24. The main reason for that has, has to do with the fact that a portion of the site is encumbered by Dominion Virginia Power Easement, which is, which reduces, in effect, the amount of the property that is counted towards the density and lot coverage. However, what you have is the lot coverage, if it weren't impacted by this, would be 46%, which is below the maximum permitted, not only in the A24, but certainly in the A18 district. And that's why, because of the impact of that right away, the applicant is requesting the conditional A24 change. Staff had recommended approval. Planning Commission had placed it on their consent agenda, and again, no opposition was expressed to that change. Back up to Lynn Haven District, Richard and Judy Foster are requesting a subdivision variance off of Eagle Nest Point. The applicants own two lots, 1.2 acres and 2.66 acres, and would like to re-subdivide the two lots and create a third lot. However, that would not meet certain lot width requirements in that R40 district, and those variances of being requested to accommodate that. Otherwise, the proposed lots, all three of them meet the other requirements in the R40 district. Staff had recommended approval with conditions. Planning Commission agreed, placing it on their consent agenda, and there was no opposition from the neighborhood. Lynn Haven again, BH Investors off Linsley Drive, another subdivision variance, in order to subdivide a 1.6 acre parcel zoned R20 into three lots. The, one of the lots meets all the requirements and is not part of the request. However, the others are deficient in terms of lot width and frontage by a little bit. The, they do not meet the 100-foot requirement, but come pretty close, and therefore, the applicant is requesting a variance to accommodate that subdivision. Staff had recommended approval. Planning Commission placed it on their consent agenda. There was no opposition at the public hearing. However, staff did receive a few letters and emails expressing some opposition to the proposal.
And those will be included in our package, correct?
Princess Anne District, NVR Incorporated, modification of conditions to a project off of Princess Anne Road, in Mundon Farms, you see there. They are requesting approval of a modification to proffer 3, which was placed upon the property in 2006. In 2013, the city council approved a modification of some of those proffers from 2006 to accommodate this. What they're basically asking for is proposal to build larger lots... And the net effect of it is that the resulting open space will remain above 50 percent, but it will diminish from 59.5 under the original conditions to 56.8, still above the desired 50 percent open space for projects of the kind. Staff had recommended approval. Planning Commission placed it on their consent agenda and there was no opposition. Remaining in Princess Anne, the Development Authority is asking for a modification of conditions on property at Corporate Landing off of General Booth Boulevard. Let me see here. The, this is Green Flash Brewery in order to accommodate that project in Corporate You can see there are some of the elevations. Staff had recommended approval. Planning Commission placed it on their consent agenda and there was no opposition to this.
They have some equipment that has to...
Right. The...
You can go there and it's big enough...
Equipment exceeds the height limitation by four or five feet.
Essential that they have this...
It is. Yeah, it's something that they need in order to accommodate their manufacturing processes.
All right.
And I, I believe, no, one more. One more. Rose Hall, how can I, can't leave... Not used to having Rose Hall on the agenda, but Monarch Properties, Monarch Properties off of South Rosemont Road, this is a rezoning request in order to develop an oddly shaped piece of property, which also happens to have a power line easement running across it, which limits to some degree their developability. They're asking to go to O2, O1 rather, for an office development, complex development with substantial buffering and tasteful elevations, architectural styles.
Where is it at?
South Rosemont Road.
It's very controversial.
Near just north of Dam Neck.
Getting really riled up.
Staff had recommended approval. Planning Commission placed it on their consent. There was some opposition.
You're so funny.
Jack, we thank you so very much.
Thank you. That takes us through...
We had a really good meeting today. Thank y'all for being here. Will is yours.
Thank you, Paul.